Okay, now this meeting is now called order. Departmental reports first on the list. Constitutional officers treasures report. Okay, I guess we're now open for public expression. Nobody out there wants to volunteer, huh? Last call, public expression. Okay, I guess we'll close out public expression and next on the agenda is approval of minutes from June 20, 2017, public may hearing, June 20th, 2017, regular meeting, June 22nd, 2017 recess meeting, and June 27th, 2017 recess meeting.
Those first three together.
Yeah, the first three together. Okay, well, just do A, B, and C, items A, B, and C, June 20, 2017, June 20, 2017 regular meeting, and June 22nd, 2017 recess meeting. We had a couple of members absent from the last meeting. Make a motion to approve those, A, B, and C. Okay, we got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, we've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the D. D, the answer.
Okay, we got a motion to approve June 27th, 2017 recess meeting. Got a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next on the agenda is refunds. Billy Wynn and pardon me if I'm wrong, Treva Riley. Did I say that correctly?
Motion that we approve this refund to Billy Wynn, Treva Riley for $74.91.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the refund. You got a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the list is payroll, county administrator reports payroll warrants have been issued. Had approval of what?
Motion to pay the bills.
Okay, a motion to pay the bills, got a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got approval of dispersals.
That was approval.
Okay. Okay, going on to finances, next on the list. Prior year supplemental appropriations.
Have three items on there this time, three departments revenue had been, has already been received. This is just clearing up the end of the year, June 30th, to cover the expenses that were made up to the end of the month, and revenue that had been, has been received, cover that.
So all this is such as the V-Doc cleanup, it's actually just paying back what's paid out?
Yes, appropriating the funds that were received after June 30th back to that period in case of the litter cleanup. Actually, those funds were deposited on June 30th. The Head Start funding was received in prior months, and coal road re-improvement, those funds had already been received and deposited as well.
I'll make a motion to approve appropriation to fund number one, appropriation to fund number 24, appropriation to fund number 27.
Okay, we got a motion, you got a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we got new business, board appointments. Got the airport authority first.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Charles Colson, the airport authority.
Okay, we got a motion to reappoint Charles Colson. You got a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
What about the Spears? That's, we have one represented from each district, Charlie is mine. Jackson's the, the one that teamed up on it.
Ben Hurd. Michelle Nissanders, Ben Hurd's.
Oh, that I know. It's a reappointment. You gonna table it, Dave? Or are you gonna think about it?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll make a motion to table, because I haven't spoken, you know, to Jason to see if he wants to be reappointed. Second. Okay, we got a motion to table that one, and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the list is the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Make a motion for Betty Grable to be reappointed.
Okay, got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Okay, and we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, on the Industrial Development Authority.
Make a motion to reappoint Wayne Bonham.
Okay, we got a motion to reappoint Wayne Bonham, and AJ Hatmaker also, if somebody has any objections. Okay, AJ Hatmaker also, is any, you got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we go to Southwest Virginia 911 Standards Committee. Currently have Alan Bailey, Billy K. Barber, and Mr. Dane Poe.
I'll make a motion to reappoint all three.
Got a motion to reappoint all three, got a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next would be the Woodway Water Authority.
Make a motion to reappoint Mike Money to that board.
Okay, got a motion to reappoint Mike Money. Got a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Dave, what about the, you know, this one came open for St. Charles, I know we've discussed that some, but I got somebody that's.
If you want to go ahead, we, it was so close to the agenda going out, we didn't include that on there. There was a death of one of the members of the St. Charles Water Authority, and it is a county appointment, so if you have someone you want to appoint, that would be fine.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Rochester Water.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, got, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the list is the Emergency Operations Plan Approval.
We received a copy of the updated plan. It has to be updated and reapproved by the governing body at least every four years. Typically, sometimes there's a few other changes, but usually it's just contact information and updates on facilities and things of that nature. So, there is a resolution right behind memo that can be adopted to approve the updated plan.
I'd like to make a comment on that too, Mr. Chairman. We, we redone the SOPs for the county, and as a board committee, we're going to be working on the D, so hopefully we'll actually be able to, if we need something in or out, but beyond contact information, we'll be getting this back to the board, hopefully, six months, a year or so. But I think the deadline's on this now, Dave, for the document, for your document.
Yeah, it's time for it to be updated.
A deadline on it?
I don't know an actual date, but this is the year that we need to have the update. Keniston, he's got all the, I've been back over it after all corrections and everything been made and all the updates, I think we've got everything in there.
Make motion with adopt resolution 17 dash 007, Emergency Operations Plan.
Okay, we got a motion to accept Emergency Operations Plan approved. Got a second?
Second.
Okay, and we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is the United Way Ignite Program Fund Request.
This request came in previously, I forget what month we actually first took this up, but I did include a copy, I guess it'll be on there in May, it came to the, at the May meeting. They submitted a request for the board to provide funding for the Ignite Program, which also includes the Careers Expo for Youth and their operations tomorrow's workforce. The Career Expo for Youth event is to be held in September. The matter was initially tabled, and then was discussed again during a budget workshop. I think in the budget workshop, we discussed it and were going to act on some additional new budget requests. This was not a budget request, just a general funding request, and then when we dealt with the new budget request, this, this sort of got overlooked and nothing was done on it. So I just wanted to bring it back to you to see. I have since met with a couple of representatives of United Way, and have learned that the Lee County School System will be sending students to that on both days. They're splitting up, not sending all of them the same day, they're sending them on two different days. Also, I think I've made you aware, the Lee County Chamber of Commerce is involved, and that local businesses are being encouraged also to provide information booths. I know, at this point, the only one I'm aware of is Willow's Road State Park, we'll have a booth there. So, the original request was for $2,500, I'm sure they would accept any amount.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2,500 with additional information given to us after the woman who came and done the presentation on the numbers.
Okay, we got a motion for them to make the $2,500 donation. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next is Commonwealth Attorney, collection of fines and cost treatment.
May remember that back in February last year, the Commonwealth Attorney presented a plan to do local collection of fines and costs, court costs, rather than being done out of county and all the proceeds going to the state. By doing it locally, you can retain a portion of the proceeds here in the county. After receiving the board's approval, they did not sign the agreement. The original agreement included the Circuit Court Clerk's office, and I don't know what the issues were, but it never did get fully signed. So, at this point, he's come back now and presented a new memorandum of understanding that's basically the same as the prior agreement, agreement that was approved last year, it had just a few minor changes. Of course, the Circuit Court Clerk is not a party to this agreement, only the Commonwealth Attorney and the county. The clerks of both courts would cooperate in this matter, because they have to do this work anyway. I did enclose a copy for your review. I had a couple of questions, I was able to clear those up today. This way the language was in the agreement, the term "collection fees" was defined, and then it was used in two or three different ways. And once you define a term in an agreement, that's, that's the definition of that term throughout the agreement. So it made it a little bit confusing, but after discussing it with them today, I think we've got that cleared up, so.
Well, I thought I was losing my mind, Colson, due that we voted on it.
Yes, yes, this was voted on and approved, but then the original agreement, for whatever reasons, was never formally signed by everyone.
So do we need to terminate the original agreement, adopt the new agreement?
Since it was never, since it was never signed, it was never, it was approved with this board, but it's never become effective, because it was not signed, was not executed by all the parties. So all, all that's being asked here is to approve this memorandum of understanding.
I'll make a motion that we improve the memorandum of understanding to allow transactions to occur. Okay, we got a motion, we got a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next on the list is Employee Request for Close Session.
I do not see the employee present at this time. I have a few other items, very, won't take long, but you may want to check with the county attorney, see if she's got anything, I don't know.
Well, I mean, all that was after that, so.
Right.
So you want to hold off on that for, go on straight to the, okay. And you don't have anything?
No, I have nothing to report.
Okay, I guess, car away, there, Mr. Poe.
Okay. Three of the board members and myself attended a meeting Thursday night regarding the potential with new legislation that became effective July 1, for a hydroelectric pump storage facility to be located in the Coalfield Counties of Virginia. That, it was a, it was a legislation specific to the Coalfield Counties. And in sharing some information on that, they have requested that Boards of Supervisors of affected localities consider a resolution. We discussed whether or not to go ahead and bring it before you tonight, or whether to wait till August meeting, and I think there was a pretty high comfort level with the resolution. I give you just a minute to look over it, basically just stating what I've already said, that this legislation that has been approved will allow this. There is not a specific location yet, as to where this could be located. There will be some other spinoff facilities that could potentially be created with the development of a facility like this. It is not a short-term project, based on the information we were given, it could be five to eight years in developing something like this, and actually getting it constructed. But it would provide jobs and quite, quite a bit of impact through the construction phase as well. Two things are being requested in this resolution, and I'm assuming you, okay, it's Resolution 17 dash 008. Basically, what's being requested that you approve is that as a board, you're stating that you strongly support construction of a hydroelectric pump storage facility in the Coalfield Region. Further, that you support evaluation of sites in this area for possible construction of such a facility, and that also you would support the concept of revenue and cost sharing among all city and county governments within the Coalfield Region for the tax revenue and cost derived from such a facility, should it be constructed. Revenue sharing typically comes with, you're basically sharing the cost of developing a project, then you're sharing the revenues generated by that project. This one is a little bit different in that most of, and I asked this question the other night, question, the, the answer was a little vague, because, and I expected it to be, really, but I would think that most of the development costs in a project such as this would be borne by the industry developing the site. There may be some local, local costs, those would have to be determined at a future date. And at such time, if a facility should be determined to be feasible here, then better numbers would be available before you formally entered into a, a revenue sharing, a revenue and cost sharing agreement. This simply states that you support the concept of that, rather than committing you to anything. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them, or the board members who attended may want to answer as well.
I think it's a great project, and, like you say, it's not a short-term thing, even after it gets up and running, the one in Bass County's been running for.
It's been running since the.
Early eighties.
Early eighties. It was began, I believe they said, in 1977, and went online in about 83.
Yeah, but, you know, it's a long-term revenue source, and I don't think that, I don't feel that the cost will be that much, I think we'll get a better return for any money that we invest in.
I feel like that also, because I feel like all the other counties are going to be involved. Have a lot of potential for a lot of jobs.
Yeah.
In our Coalfield County.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, we adopt resolution 17 dash 008.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item is an update. We've been talking about this radio project for quite some time, and one of the delays in being able to finalize everything, if you recall at our final meeting in June, I asked you to authorize going ahead and executing the lease agreement for a portion of that purchase. The balance of the purchase, which is $265,000, was subject to the COPS Technology Grant Award that we received several years ago. We went through a budget amendment, got that approved, then because we had selected Motorola as a sole source provider on this equipment, I won't say they challenged that, they asked for documentation on how we came to that decision, and what information it was used to base that decision. I provided that information to them after, I don't know how many weeks it was, but after about four weeks, I finally received last Thursday, a letter stating that they have approved our documentation for the sole source procurement. Also in that letter was some additional language about still being responsible to meet the procurement requirements of some other federal statutes. There's about 20 pages, or about 27 pages of that, that I need to read, and be, basically give myself the 99.9% confidence rating that we're good to go on it, in meeting all the federal requirements. I also want to review a portion of the grant guidelines, which are about this thick. I don't need to review them all, just the portion on procurement. But, once that's been done, we would be, we would be free to go ahead and expend funds under the grant. Now, it is a reimbursement-based program, which means we have to pay the money upfront, and then request reimbursement from the feds for that. So, tonight, in anticipation of an expected confidence level that we've met all the procurement requirements in, in the code sections that they have stipulated, I would request that I be authorized to issue a check to Motorola in an amount of $265,000 after I've completed that process, because they will not order any of the radios, any of the new radios, until the down, the down payment is made. The lease agreement has been signed, but it's waiting on the down payment, it's contingent on that, so they're holding off on the radio orders. We have, they have actually, I think, Two Way has actually got some of the radios in stock, but they can't release them from stock. We have five new cruisers, and rather than putting the old radios in them that we knew were going to be replaced, those, those cruisers are waiting for new radios to be installed, and we can't do that until this amount's paid. So, I think I can have this cleared, hopefully by the end of this week, or by Monday at the latest, but I'm, I'm thinking I can get it cleared up by the end of this week.
I'd make that a motion to authorize that.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I actually figured that was covered, Dave, and we approved getting the radio, I mean, that's pretty much what we had regarded.
Everything's a separate step, so I just, I want to make sure, before I sign off on a check for that mail, because I don't think I can cover that with my checkbook. Fact, I know I couldn't. Laco reservations, is anybody, anybody going? November 12th through the 14th, I need to finalize the reservations.
Now?
Well, I've mentioned this.
The meeting last.
Previous meeting last month, I think, but it doesn't have to be now, but I'd like to know by the end of the week, so that I can finalize it. That is November 12th through 14th, so.
I don't know.
If you're interested, let me know.
Where is it? Same place?
Yes, same, same location. Also, we do have interviews scheduled tomorrow at 5:00. Found out about 4:00 this afternoon, there's a hospital meeting tomorrow night at 7:00. Your last interview is scheduled for 6:45, so it will probably, your meeting's going to run by 7, unless some of them don't show up, and some of them show up early, the latter ones, so.
One of the interviews.
But I'll just make you aware of the hospital meeting tomorrow night.
Gary going to be up there tomorrow evening?
I'll, I'll make him aware. I told him a few days ago, he wanted to know, and I told him it was Wednesday, and he was expected to be there. Actually, I'll probably be there for maybe the first 10 minutes, or five to 10 minutes, and I've got a planning commission meeting tomorrow at the same time at 5:00, and not only are we reviewing zoning, but we're going to start on a comprehensive plan, and we'll have a representative from Linnawisco there, so I feel like I would be better served to be in that meeting, since Gary is going to be in your house, because he, he can tell them more about the job than I can. So, I feel like it'd be more important for him to be there.
Have that department in there is always good, ask questions, plus they can have some.
I'll get certain way to get ahold of some of them folks tomorrow, and see if they can come in a little bit earlier, so we can get them through quicker, because Didi and I have a meeting, Linnawisco tomorrow, starts at 2:00.
2:00?
Oh, we did.
We.
Sunset Digital and all that. Yeah, they take on.
We intentionally set the first interview for 5:15, because, not necessarily this board, but boards in general have a history of not showing up exactly right on time for energy meetings, and, but typically, we need just a few minutes to go over what the position is, and the pace scales, and things like that. So we scheduled it for 5:15. Jenny had mentioned she may be able to get in touch with the last one, the one that was scheduled for 6:45, and move them to 5:00. If, if they could come in at 5:00, that keeps us from having to call everybody and try to bump the whole schedule back. If we can move one person, that would have you finishing up, hopefully, just a little bit prior to 7:00, and you'd still have time to make it up there. It is at the community center.
Yeah, we definitely need to be there.
Okay, the other thing, I sent you out a text this afternoon, asking you to check your schedules for next week. The school board is looking at a, potentially a joint meeting, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday evening at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock up next week. This would be to hear a, this, if I understand it will be a, the majority of the meeting will be closed session, hearing from the vendor. the majority of the meeting will be closed session, hearing from the vendor that they selected in their facility study process, to hear some proposals on that. There, well, unless you, I, I think this would be the case. You're not expected to make any decisions at that meeting. I think the school board will probably be making a decision. But I suggested that due to time issues, that maybe you all would take that up at a later date for consideration, instead of both bodies acting on it at, at the same time. They are, you'll, you'll hear more about all of that at that meeting, but we need to select a date on that, so I can make him aware. I don't know if everybody got the text, or if you had a chance to check schedules. But as I said, any day, Monday through Thursday of next week, is what they had proposed.
Thursday, I checked my, Thursday be the only day I can. I'm like, I'm going to be out of town for sure. Up until Thursday.
Well, I'll be out of town Thursday home, but you all can meet with them, I don't need to be there.
27. Next Thursday, you're telling Matt, Dee Dee?
Yes. 27, yeah.
Thursday's time for me.
If that tape worked for everyone else?
We came Wednesday because we got that DMX meeting. We never held here at the courthouse Wednesday.
You have a preferred time, 5:00 or 6:00?
5:00.
5:00 is good for me.
5:00.
Okay, and then we have a meeting tomorrow. Here, right? Another meeting tomorrow? Right, at Bed and Conference. Okay.
I said 5:00.
At 5:00.
I'll get back with the superintendent on this tonight and let him be confirming that they can do this on Thursday and at 5:00. And hopefully then by tomorrow afternoon, when you all are here, I'll be able to confirm that.
Are we saying at 5:00 or at now?
Yes. That's tentative, Thursday at 5:00, the 27.
Okay. Thursday at 5:00?
Yes.
Wednesday at 5:00?
Next Thursday.
What?
I'm waiting for your pen to stop moving.
Carry on.
Oh, okay, I'm just going to let you finish writing whatever you want. That's all I have, and a motion to go into closed session for personnel without being ordered.
All right, then. Need a motion for Employee Request for Closed Session. Okay. Okay. Make a motion to go into closed session under 2.2-Dash-3711A1, Discussion Concerning Personnel. Okay, we got a motion to go into closed session, got a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?